I call this meeting of the Town of West Boylston Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. The following members are present: Superintendent Justin Kumar, Dave Phemia, Associate Member Chris Mitchell, and Member Nate Orcianni, as well as myself, Vice Chair. We have a few items on the agenda tonight. We're going to do the meeting minutes. We're already at the time for the Gabriel hearing. So the board have any objections to going straight to the hearing? We'll deal with the previous agenda minutes at the end of the meeting.
It's okay.
All right. So let's start the meeting. Dave, if you wouldn't mind reading.
Notice of public hearing, Zoning Board of Appeals, West Boylston, Massachusetts. The Town of West Boylston Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, July 20, 2023, at 7:05 at the West Boylston Town Office's 140 Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass., in Room 10 Selectman's Meeting Room, and via Zoom instructions to follow a meeting agenda posted 48 hours prior to the meeting. To act upon the petition of Justin Gabriel for administration of appeal of an enforcement order issued by the Building Inspector George Tigner, ordering the petitioner to fully demolish and remove the garage structure on his property at 57 Goodale Street, West Boylston, Mass. Record title stands in the name of Justin Gabriel, 57 Goodale Street, West Boylston, Mass. Copies of the petition are on file at the Office of the Town Clerk, 140 Worcester Street, and are available upon request. All interested parties are invited to attend the publicated hearing either in person or via Zoom. John Benson, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Gabriel has a representative tonight, I believe?
Yes, good evening, members of the board. Thomas Orr from Brown Legal on behalf of Mr. Gabriel.
All right, sir, if you want to make a presentation, we did, the board has announced we did receive your petition. We have the materials that you previously submitted. So you are welcome to start with any presentation you would like.
Thank you. Good evening. The enforcement order that Justin appealed fundamentally is unfair and inequitable. That is why Justin appealed that order. The enforcement order would require Justin to demolish a garage in light of certain undisputed facts. One, the town issued a valid building permit to Justin to build the garage. Two, Justin began construction of the garage pursuant to that building permit. Three, the town subsequently ordered Justin to stop construction of the garage. Four, he stopped construction of the garage in response to the town's directive. Five, the town and Justin litigated the issue of whether the garage constituted an accessory use. And six, the town waived enforcement of the demolition issue when it failed and refused to litigate that issue in the land The standard before the board is clear. Case law is clear. There's certain case that I referenced in our appeal, the last page of that package. It is the Del Pret versus Rockland Zoning Board of Appeals matter. But that was a land court matter. And in that land court matter, the court considered a very similar issue. And the issue was twofold. One, whether a structure violated a local zoning bylaw. And two, what do you do with the structure that's actually been built? The court laid out three clear elements, and we would submit that the board take that into consideration in ruling on our application tonight. One, substantial harm or substantial hardship. Fundamentally, economic wastes. There would be undue substantial hardship upon Justin to demolish a garage that he built pursuant to a valid building permit. That's undisputed. The second element was whether there would be any injury to the public interests. While the town had the opportunity to litigate this issue in the land court matter, and it was actually discussed during the trial, but that was at the trial, at the tail end of it. That was not actively litigated and pursued by the town. And the final portion is the exhaustion of administrative remedies. And here's where selective prosecution against Justin Gabriel fits in. That enforcement order was issued a mere 13 days after he dismissed his appeal of the land court matter. And as this board is aware, the land court matter was referenced in the enforcement order. Just last fall, approximately 10 months ago, the town, buying through its Building Inspector, Mr. Tigner, filed a lawsuit against Justin seeking in part a preliminary injunction related to purported violations of town bylaws regarding unregistered vehicles. I would submit to you that lawsuit was meritless. It was dismissed, and it was dismissed in large part because Justin did not violate the law. He did not violate the zoning bylaw. The purported unregistered vehicles were registered, and in fact, that information was available to Mr. Tigner when he caused that lawsuit to be pursued. There's no current public danger as it relates to the structure. This has been the status quo for years. Five-plus years ago is when the building permit was initially issued. Shortly after that, it went through the appellate process through this board, and then subsequently through the land court matter. For five-plus years, there's been no attempt to go and have that structure demolished. That was available to the town as a remedy in the land court matter that was not pursued. So where does that put this board? In light of the standard for Del Pret, those three elements that I had enumerated, which would be the standard that any trial court would need to apply in light of any adverse decision against Justin, allow the structure to remain. It's practical. It's fair. If there are certain conditions that this honorable board wishes to impose, that will be understandable. It should be noted that in light of certain orders in the past issued by the town, though the structure is there, Justin, it's not completed. Justin did not complete the, building out the structure because of certain orders by the town. I do understand that the Conservation Commission, as an aside, did inquire about the status of water running off the structure, and to that, there is drainage surrounding the perimeter of the structure. Drainage has not been an issue in the past, but I did want that information to be front and center with the board. And with that, I'd be available to address any questions that this honorable board might have.
Does any member of the board have any questions? The petitioner?
I do.
Go ahead.
Okay. In reading the letter that you sent to town clerk informing them that Mr. Gabriel was going to appeal the enforcement order, there were some things that kind of bothered me. One of them is, it talks about the land court matter solely addressed the building permit, not the question of whether the garage should be demolished. So to our town council, is that a fact?
So the land court matter...
Dave, right now, let's direct our questions, if we have any questions, of the petitioner. They want to get that addressed first.
Okay, well, then I'll ask Mr. Orr. Because also in the letter you wrote that this is a separate matter that has not yet been litigated, and then you give trial decision, and then you cite Del Pret versus the Rockland Zoning Board of Appeals. So, holding that illegal, non-compliant structure need not be demolished. So, I guess the same question to you. Did the land court ever address demolishing the building?
So, that was not actively litigated during that land court matter. And the citations I include in the letter that you have before you, Mr. Phemia, in part it does reference a certain provision or excerpt, I should say, from the trial transcripts. And that was discussed before the court, the very end, where it was not actively litigated, but potential as a remedy. And I use that as a way to juxtapose Del Pret, where it talked about the economic waste and substantial hardship. Really going back to the fact that had the town truly, the town had the opportunity to pursue and litigate the issue of demolition, but it chose not to do so.
Okay. Could I respond, Mr. Chair?
Can you hear us?
Sorry, I was muted. Go ahead. Yes, please.
So I would agree with my brother counsel that the issue of demolition was not expressly addressed in the land court. However, I disagree that the town waived its ability to pursue enforcement on that issue in any way. And in fact, I think it would have been premature for the town to litigate that issue without first knowing the underlying question that was appealed as to whether or not the structure was lawfully on the property. So it would have been premature, in my opinion, to litigate whether or not the structure could stay there without first knowing whether or not it was legal for it to be where it is. And ultimately, the land court ruled it is not lawfully, was not lawfully constructed. It's not an allowable accessory use. The board appropriately determined that it has a detrimental impact on the neighborhood. Now that those determinations have been made, at that point, once the appeal pending before the appeals court was dropped, then in my opinion, the town's ability to enforce the question of whether or not the structure should remain became ripe.
May I have a brief response?
Thank you. Yes, proceed.
Thank you. To the extent that town, town council just stated that the town pursued the issue of whether the accessory, the garage constituted an accessory structure without looking at the ultimate disposition of it. Had the town chosen to litigate the accessory use issue in conjunction with the demolition, it would have obviated the need for duplicative litigation. And when I say duplicative litigation, I'm talking about the same parties regarding substantially similar issues regarding that same garage structure. That opportunity was afforded to the town in the land court matter that's already been adjudicated. Yet the town chose in its discretion to only pursue the initial question, which is whether it was appropriate, not the ultimate determination. What do you do with the structure?
Counsel, addressing what you just said, isn't it sort of the point of, why would the town pursue finding that this is not, the structure is not lawful if the town did not intend to issue a demolition order after that? It seems rather pointless for the town to have pursued the initial matter if the town did not openly intend to have the structure removed. I mean, the idea of getting a piece of paper saying, yes, town, you are correct that this is not a, the zoning board was correct and the structure is lawful, did you expect the town was just going to frame that decision and be done with it? Or did you expect the town was going to then take action?
Well, to be frank, I would have expected the town, that land court matter was an appeal of the ZBA's decision against Mr. Gabriel. And I would have expected the town to, had it given the opportunity to go and reach the ultimate decision, as you just said, that the town would have gone off and acted on whether or not it was an accessory use.
No.
Sorry.
He overbuilt it.
So I would have expected the town, had it truly felt that, yes, this is the final determination, and expecting the court to affirm that determination, to, in conjunction that same matter, seek that ultimate relief of requests.
You issued that order.
I don't know who just interrupted me, but that...
Andrew?
Sorry, Andrew Phelan, member of the zoning board that actually voted on this.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Let's limit this to one person at a time.
I apologize. I'm speaking out of order.
Thank you.
Counsel, if you had additional response to that, everyone will be given an opportunity to speak, but I want to make sure we do this in an orderly fashion.
Mr. Chair, I feel I have sufficiently responded to your question. If you have follow-up questions, I'd be happy to address that, or any other questions that a member of the board or a member of the general public might have.
Right now, we are going to take any additional questions from the board that is hearing this matter, and then at the appropriate time, we'll take comments from the public that's there. Any other member of the board have anything, any questions?
John, I do. So...
I go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So the building permit was issued on October 11, 2018, right? So it was appealed within the appeal period, even before the ZBA scheduled a hearing. Even before scheduled a hearing, Mr. Gabriel, he took a risk knowingly that that is not, he's not supposed to build it. He took a risk to build the building. Am I correct?
No, you're not, because he began construction of the garage pursuant to valid building permit. Fundamentally, in your question, implicit is...
He built the building during an appeal period. It was appealed. Yes, the building permit was issued. I'm not saying no. But he took a risk of building the building while it was in appeal. That's the only thing. He knows it's a risk to build a building during appeals period.
Was that a question?
No, that's a question as well as the statement I'm trying to make. It was built during appeals period knowingly. That is not the right thing to do. He took a risk of building the building.
Respectfully disagree. To the extent that he did know that it wasn't the right thing to do by acting pursuant to a building permit issued by a duly-appointed member of the town.
Thank you. That's all, John.
Thank you. Does any other member of the board have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
Okay, when this, when this transpired five years ago, I was one of the members that was on the board that heard the administrative appeal from Mrs. Silva. And I listened to all the facts. I listened to both sides. I listened to what the building inspector had. And the vote was for not to, for to approve the administrative appeal, and one was not to. And I was the one that was not to, because at the time, and I still believe today, that the building permit was lawfully issued because Mr. Gabriel had gone to the building department and had sat down with the building inspector and went through all the things that needed to go through, the setbacks and all of that. So, this is really a tough spot now to come in and, you know, hear that, you know, nothing was ever put in, no language was put into the, into the land court decision that specifically said that the building needed to be torn down. So, I'm torn. So I hope somebody's going to be able to come up with an answer to help me. So that's all I have right now, John.
Thank you. Any other board have any questions?
It's open to public now. Any public ask question?
All right. If no other member of, if no other member of the board has a question, I'll entertain questions from the public.
You can sit in the chair.
Sit here.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Anthony Nasudi, 63 Goodale Street. This permit, was it for commercial or residential? Because I have personally seen military-grade vehicles and what appears to be weapon cases being placed in and outside of this garage. So, knowing his business, if it's commercial, then that's one thing, but if it's residential, I mean, it's more of a business than a garage.
Okay, I don't think that that's, that issue is specifically before us, and is certainly, it is appropriate for you to, as a member of the public, to weigh in and ask a question and to put your thoughts on the record. But I'm not, not sure exactly what, what you're presenting to the board.
Well, I mean, this building's obviously going to be used for commercial use. He's placed all of these RVs that he has up for sale outside of, on his website, right outside. He's storing military-grade vehicles and weapon cases, and with his job that he does, I mean, that kind of connects work with his house. So if it's a residential area, then why does he need a commercial-grade building?
Well, I will say for myself, to the board in a prior action, as it rests the matter that, in the opinion of the ZBA, that was not a lawful use to construct that garage, and that was subsequently decided in court and not appealed, that it is not a lawful use. So that particular issue is not for us. The issue...
John, you are out. Okay. You are back, John.
Okay, can you hear me? So what I'm saying is, the issue before us today is whether or not the building should be demolished. The issue is not relitigating whether or not this was a lawful accessory use. That issue has already been litigated. Court previously made a determination that the building permit should not have been issued. This was not a lawful accessory use. That issue was subsequently litigated, and after litigating it, the court agreed with the town, and no further appeal was, well, appeal was filed and then later withdrawn. That brings us today to a subsequent order from the building inspector, an order to demolish the building. Now that order to demolish the building is being appealed.
I mean, that seems pretty simple to me. I mean, you do something illegal, it should, if you build something illegal, it should be removed. I mean, it's kind of how it works. You blow a red light, you get a ticket, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's, I mean, I used to be, I'm former military police, you know, that's how it is. You break the law, there's going to be consequences.
Understood. And in fairness to, to the petitioner, their position is that it was lawfully constructed because a building permit was issued. The building permit pursuant to a later ZBA decision was withdrawn because the ZBA determined that the building permit should not have been issued. But the position, and I'll give counsel an opportunity to expand on this if you'd like, but the position of the petitioner was that the initial construction was done pursuant to a lawful building permit, and then ZBA acted after that building permit was issued. Counsel, do you want a response to that? And I'm going to ask you to be brief in that response. I don't want to get too far down that road. But if you'd like to briefly comment on that, you may.
Sure. I believe in general, that's a pretty fair summary, and the key portion there being that there was that earlier permit that Mr. Gabriel did bill pursuant to, and that the issue here today, that we, before this honorable board, well, he does focus in on the demolition order. And if I could be brief, I do have an excerpt from the trial transcript that I believe, Member Phemia, this was actually referenced in the letter that we talked about earlier. If I may read that in?
Go ahead.
There was an objection by town council that, quote, "Your honor, I would object to this whole line of questioning as relevant. I really don't see how the state of construction of the structure is relevant." The court, well, I'll overrule it only because it does respond to a question raised on cross-examination. I think it's fairly within the scope of what was asked on cross-examination. It also potentially may go to the nature of a remedy that the court, by judgment, may be called upon to impose, overruled. And to note, the court did not issue or order the demolition of the structure when it issued its judgment in the land court matter.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public you'd like to speak?
Yes.
Andrew Phelan?
Andrew Phelan, 101 Central Street. As I recall, from when this appeal was first presented to the zoning board, construction was nowhere close to complete when we voted on this. Am I incorrect in my timeline?
It was only framed.
Yeah, as I recall, it was framed, but it was nowhere close to complete. There was no plumbing, there was no roof.
The, so, I can talk to the current structure of the...
I don't care about the current structure. I care about where the structure was when we voted on this. When we said this should not continue, your client was nowhere close to complete. He could have stopped right then and been under very limited financial burden. He chose to continue. He took a risk going over this board's head and going to the land court, and he lost. And now he's coming back and making no new arguments, because all I'm hearing is the same stuff we heard when I was here sitting on this board and we voted on it. I got issued a legal building permit. I should be allowed to continue. What do you have for us that's different?
Justin stopped upon order, on directive, and he...
It's not what I saw. I live around the corner from the building. I saw construction continuing after this board voted and said, you should stop.
I understand this is contentious, but if we can keep a certain amount of decorum, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
So, just, the structure was enclosed, in terms of the envelope pursuant to...
Again, it's not what I recall.
Okay, one at a time, please, one at a time.
All right.
It was enclosed in conjunction with certain town officials to ensure the structural integrity of it so that it did not pose any type of danger. That was completed, and you are accurate when you're saying that Justin did commence construction pursuant to a valid building permit.
Right. But am I accurate also in stating that Justin continued construction after this board voted and said he should stop?
Ultimately, the matter was decided by the trial court.
Am I accurate or not?
That's not what we're here before the board was talking about.
Am I accurate or not?
That's not what we're here talking about.
We're not answering the question. Am I accurate or not?
Okay, hold on, hold on.
I am asking a question. Am I accurate or not?
Andrew?
Stop.
I will take from your lack of response that I am accurate. He continued construction after he said to stop?
Andrew, please, please.
All right.
Okay, okay. We can't have everyone speaking.
Melissa Selva, 55, Goodale, Director Butter. So when I approached you guys, he had a cease and desist. The building was framed, only framed, not enclosed. Cease and desist. He paid an engineer to say that the building, the structure was unsafe. He took it to Worcester Housing, who gave him approval, to close, I think, three sides and a roof. Still under litigation with court. In fact, when we went to Judge Piper in Boston, he said he was very upset that this matter was in a different court at the same time, that he only wanted it in one court. Then Justin went on, while we were still in litigation, with a cease and desist. He put in plumbing, he put in electrical conduits that the building inspector knew, because I have photos and presented them. In court, Piper, Judge Piper said that he was there to determine the permit, that this would go back to the town to decide what happens with the structure now. So I believe that is where we are now, trying to decide what do you do with a structure, a non-conforming lot, that Judge Piper has decided should have never been issued a permit. Now, as to your setbacks, I have an email from Anita, who used to be our town administrator, saying that Mr. Gabriel removed the pin from when he had the land marked and moved it to meet the setbacks. And she, the town, had it re-surveyed, because it, and I have it, so she's like, we do, indeed, he did indeed move the pin to meet the setbacks. That is illegal. You cannot move a pin once you've had your land surveyed. So Mr. Tigner coming to do the setbacks, he doesn't know the pin has been moved. He's just measuring from where the pin was placed. If I had not let Anita know, I just happened to be off from work that day and saw him moving the pin, he would not have known that the setbacks were wrong. Okay? So when we ceased and desist, it was a frame. I have a picture. It was just framed, cease and desist. He continued. He continued. I continually called the town and said, "This is a cease and desist Friday afternoon. He'd work on it all weekend and end on Sunday." There's no one here to come enforce anything. Questions?
Thank you. John?
Questions? Does any other member of the public have any statements they'd like to make?
One second.
Sure.
Jimmy.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Tim Shea, fifty-five Good Dale. My question is, when the initial permit was given by, I believe, Mr. Bentley, he was a building inspector, and I believe it was on his last day of employment here. I worked for the town at the time. I punched out, came to the building inspector's office, talked to Mr. Lund, I believe, and said, "Can I see the building plans for what's going, this monstrosity going up across from us?" He pulled the permit out. He had no idea about it. It was drawn in paper, and he said, "I get to revoke this permit immediately." So, that was permit number one. So, where did permit number two come from? Cause the permit was revoked, as far as I knew, right off the get-go.
I think that may be a question best directed to Mr. Tigner.
Judge?
And one other question before I get up, Judge. In the town of West Boylston, you need, you need a hundred and twenty feet of frontage, correct, to build anything? What if you have zero frontage? Shouldn't you come in front of this board first? To, you know, say, "Can I do this?" Why was the, you know, my question is, why was a permit issued when there's, he has zero frontage? That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, you want to respond?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Tigner.
George Tigner, the building commissioner? When I came here, there was a revoked building permit. And the reason for it at the time, well, I was explained by Mr. Lund at the time, who was the commissioner, that the plan that was in front of him, Mr. Gabriel thought that the center of the cul-de-sac was the, was where they were measuring back for the setback. And I says, "No, that's not, it's your prop, your actual property line that goes around the cul-de-sac. You have to measure back from then." At that point is when he changed the plan of his building so that it would get further away from the setback that he thought originally was there. And as far as the pin is concerned, that's correct. I went there and measured off the pin that was placed in there, and then we come to find out, the, the, I ordered him to have, uh, surveyed it again to find out exactly where the pin should go. So, that's that question.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Is there any other member of the public you'd like to speak?
No one, Judge.
No one, John.
No, no other, okay?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Hold on.
Do I have a second?
No, 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 hold on. The counsel for Gabriel, he wants to talk.
In light of the, the public comments, pardon me, didn't need to overspeak. So, in light of the, the recent public comments from Mr. Tigner, Mr. Shea, Ms. Silva, that underscores the significance of continuing this matter to the extent necessary to take in evidence in light of the issues that they just raised. I would submit again, as I did at the beginning, that the enforcement order was inequitable in terms of the practical effects. And that to the extent the court, or, pardon me, this board does wish to make some type of ruling, that it does be continued to allow for evidence to be taken in. Thank you.
Counsel, what evidence do you propose would be submitted if we continue this matter?
So, certainly, uh, ev- evidence related to construction, evidence related to Mr., Ms. Silva's testimony, Mr. Shea's testimony, Mr. Tigner's testimony, believes to the extent necessary, as relates, to the extent that the board would believe this remain for their, their discussion related to timing of permits and the commencement of construction, then there is evidence that we would like to submit to clarify for the board, so we can have all relevant information before it.
Thank you.
John, there doesn't seem to be anybody else, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a second?
Yes, second.
All right, I would go, all right, so we have, Raj, did you have something before we do, go to take a vote?
What, what we are, what you are, the council asks for a continuance.
The coun- yes, and I believe we should, we need to take that up. But I wanna make, but before we take that up, we have a, we currently have open public comment. So, before the board decides whether or not to make a decision today, I agree, the board should take up counsel's request to continue the matter. But right now, we have public comment. I don't believe closing public comment forecloses us from taking up the-
John, we are, we are going to go, we are going to close the public hearing. That's what the order-
We don't wanna close the hearing.
We don't want to close the hearing.
No, all right, I, 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 yes, I agree with you, Raj. I'm sorry, I, I don't, no. Closing the public hearing would not be appropriate until we act on that, on counsel's request.
Thank you.
I only was addressing, uh, or contemplating the public comment. All right, so I will entertain-
I withdraw my motion.
All right, motion is withdrawn.
Can I ask a question, John?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, town council is asking, I mean, not town council, but Mr. Gabriel's counsel is asking for a continuation. How much, how long of a continuation are we looking at?
Next meeting.
The, what, when's the next meeting? We got a couple of weeks maybe. There's, certainly there would be some, uh, some scheduling to coordinate, but that we have that information readily available and can make that, uh, presentation.
That's up to the chairman.
So, our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, August seventeenth of twenty-twenty-three.
Uh, one point of order procedural issue, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure when this appeal was initially filed, but the board has a statutory mandate of issuing a decision within one hundred days of when the appeal was filed. An applicant can agree to extend that date, but we should-
Get it in writing. We, we need to get it in writing.
To the extent the board is willing to-
When we have dealt with, yes, when, when we've dealt with this issue before, it has been with the condition that the applicant, uh, agree that, uh, waive their, the time requirement on that. So, that, that holds. So, that would certainly, I, in my opinion, would have to be a condition for this.
By a quick look at the calendar, it appears that the August fifteenth date would be within the hundred days, as town council just referenced, from the date of the appeal.
All right, it's not in the-
Sorry, sorry, it's probably not, not a, not a talking point.
Do we need to get it in writing?
Uh, if we're within the hundred days, then no.
Okay, thank you.
You're talking about the day that they sent the letter to town clerk? Is that-
Yeah, the date the appeal was filed.
Okay, it was filed on, uh, let's see, I believe it was, uh, May twenty-sixth.
May twenty-sixth.
Yes, still within the time.
Yeah, so we'd be within a hundred days still.
Okay. So, we make a motion now to continue-
Well, so, before we take, hold on, before we take that, uh, that motion, did any other member of the, uh, the board wanna comment or ask a question? And right now, I'm gonna ask you to limit any commentary to what will likely be the motion to continue this matter.
So, I, I have no prob, I have no issue on continuing this hearing?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing.
All right, well, well, hold on, Dave, hold on. Did anybody, any other board member want to speak before Dave makes his motion?
Yeah, I just got a question. So, what are you gonna bring to us that you haven't brought to the court? That's gonna make us change our minds with, with, you need time to bring information to us. I know they talked about these issues.
So, i- in terms of the chronology and when construction happened, just so everyone can be clear as to what happened when. And that, and so, obviously, we'll need to go through and listen to what those members of the general public had stated and go through, there, there was ample, as town council knows, there was a lot of information shared during the course of the land court matter. And so, we will be looking to clarify the chronology of events. That would be our, our focal point for submitting additional documentation.
All right, thank you.
So, John, before, before I make my motion, just to let you know that we have a continued public hearing, um, next month for the coffee shop on West Boylston Street. And I believe that's at seven oh five, Toby?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, can I make a motion to, uh, continue, um, this public hearing to Thursday, August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three at seven thirty PM?
All right, do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
All right, Raj, second to motion. All right, I'm gonna go, uh, as I've written our names down here, so I will take, uh, voting on that. Raj, how do you vote on that?
Yes.
Yes. Dave, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Nate?
Th- this is to an extent, correct?
The continuation of the-
This is, this is, the, the is, the, uh, motion before the board is to grant the continuance until the next scheduled public hearing, August seventeenth at seven thirty.
Yes.
My vote is yes as well. It is a unanimous decision by the board that this matter will be continued to August seventeenth at seven thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John, John, before, before we continue, if you have documents that you're gonna bring, can you please make sure that the, that Toby gets them at least a week prior to the meeting, so that the board has time to review it?
Sure, well, our office has worked with Toby in terms of, uh, com- providing documentation, but we'll be sure to reach out to her and provide anything, whether it's electronic or paper copy that the board might request.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we had a few other mi- uh, issues on our agenda. I pushed the, uh, the meeting minutes, so why don't we take that up now?
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, minute meetings for April twentieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Hold on, Raj.
To approve?
Yeah, to approve, as written.
We have a motion and second, John.
All right, Raj, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dave, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris, I don't think you're here for it, but, uh, you wanna, I don't think you need to vote on that. You were not present, but yes. Nate, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. The motion is, uh, is approved.
Motion to adjourn.
No, wait, Ja- wha- what's?
Hold on, hold on, we had a few other things on the agenda.
You got a couple more here.
Dave, why?
All right, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Dave. John, we do, do you have an agenda before you?
Uh, I have an agenda before me, but it is not usually accessed.
We have an authorized signature for accounting office.
Yes, okay.
So, normally enough, we do it, any one of us can sign it.
Oh, in the past, it had just been the office holders?
Yeah, only the, only the full members.
Chair, vice-chair, or clerk?
Yeah.
But I don't know if you wanna extend it to the whole board or just have the, the office holders.
Doesn't, didn't we usually do the whole board? Raj, didn't we usually do the whole board?
Yeah, whole board.
The whole board.
Whole board, okay.
If I remember correctly, John, if I remember correctly, any member of the board, full member of the board can sign.
I, I think that's appropriate.
Okay, do we need a mo- what, do we need a motion, uh, Toby?
I mean, I guess-
Not sure this requires a motion. I think this is a procedural matter as to how the board is, is going forward. I don't think this requires a motion.
Okay.
So, full members or?
Full members, any one of the full member.
Okay.
Toby, you have any mail or paperwork?
Um, I've got the signature page here for, I mean, whoever's a full member can sign it now.
Okay.
And then I can put it in the mailbox for, for those that are left.
Do you have a truster report? And, John, next one is treasurer's report.
Okay, I'll take the report.
Is there any, anything that, finance, treasurer's-
Financial report?
Yeah, ZBA treasurer's report.
They just sent a new one today and I would send that, Chris.
Let's table it next week, yeah.
Okay.
Next month. That's all, uh, John.
All right, that'll be tabled till next meeting. Anything else?
That's it, that's all the agenda items. Now, Dave can make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I second the motion.
All right, Raj seconds. Raj, how do you vote?
Yes.
Dave, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Nate, how do you vote?
Yes.
My vote is yes as well. This meeting is adjourned.